Hello, everyone. It is past 5:30 and I was told that there is a baseball game on and I heard that the mighty Denver Broncos are playing tonight. So, let's get to people's business. Take... Major. So, let's... Your team won. Oh, now we... Now we've digressed a lot. First time, six games, most games they won in about three years. But, uh, let's take care of the people's business. So, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen, Mr. Nichols, Mr. Amos, Mr. Childs, Mr. Greider, Ms. Wilder, and Mr. Voice.
All right, and Mr. Childs and Greider had let me know that they will not be in attendance today. So, uh, let us have a moment of silence right now. Please join me. All right, thank you. If you would please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Led by me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you.
All right, so I make a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes of the October 3rd, 2022, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We have an agenda and minutes. First item, I actually have two proclamations. The first item is the Gentleman's Day and I believe I have a Waypoint representative in the audience. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas one in three women will experience violence in their lifetime, and whereas intimate partner violence impacts victims, children, family, friends, and the community at large, and whereas domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but is experienced in all economic, racial, ethnic, educational, societal, and religious groups and is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas perpetrators of domestic violence should be held accountable for their actions and victims should have access to support and services to help them overcome their experience. And whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide support to victims of intimate partner violence and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem. And whereas only a coordinated effort from all community members will put a stop to this heinous crime. Now therefore, I Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, I will do hereby proclaim the October 19th, 2022 as Gentleman Day to support Waypoint in ending domestic violence and urge everyone to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. So, very serious topic, very serious conversation. So, would you tell us a little bit about Waypoint and Gentleman Day?
Well, Waypoint, you know, we cover 22 counties in northeast Iowa. I'm sorry, my name is Yoshida Thomas. I'm actually an advocate for Waypoint that covers Blackhawk County. Waypoint covers 22 counties in northeast Iowa. We provide resources and help victims of domestic violence, whether they're man or woman. You can always find us at waypoint.org and we want to just thank you on behalf of our communication for making us this proclamation.
Well, I want to thank you too, thank Waypoint. We've kind of partnered over the last five or six years. So, very grateful for the work they do, for their advocacy. And in addition to Waypoint, all the organizations that are out there working to end domestic and sexual abuse of women primarily. And so, I did attend an event last Friday with the Monty Services and Waypoint, but I just want to reiterate, it's incredible that we have people on the front lines working every day to try to put an end to domestic violence and sexual abuse. So, I want to thank you for being here, being an advocate. Bless all the work you do and the work that Waypoint is doing as well. So, thank you. All right, it is National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week and I believe we have Rudy Jones and I believe Jenna, I think so, from Blackhawk County. So, would you please come forward? What are you doing this evening? All right, if you just want to come around a little bit so I'll pick you up on the screen. All right, whereas the City of Waterloo supports a healthy and safe environment for children and is dedicated to the protection of health of all children. And whereas lead contaminated paint dust and soil are commonly found in older homes, specifically those built prior to 1978, and is a primary source of lead exposure of children. And whereas lead poisoning, which is an increased level of lead in the blood, is especially dangerous for children, particularly those under six years of age, and causes serious irreversible health effects. And whereas it is important that older housing units are tested and identified for lead hazards. And whereas it is vital that all citizens of Waterloo, especially parents and childgivers, are aware of the dangers of lead poisoning and that appropriate screening is sought for their children as a preventative measure. And whereas the City of Waterloo has partnered with the following organizations instrumental in prevention of lead poisoning and the execution of our Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Grant, Blackhawk County, Healthy Homes Grant, Blackhawk County Health Department, Waterloo Fire Rescue, Landlords of Blackhawk County, Operation Threshold, People's Community Health Clinic, YWCA, Waterloo Neighborhood Services, Waterloo Housing Authority, Tri-County Child and Family Development Council, Inc., and licensed and registered daycare providers. Now therefore, I Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of October 23rd through the 29th, 22 as National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week. So...
Mayor, we're so fortunate to have great partners with all of our programs, but especially those that make up the staff of Blackhawk County Health, and therefore, we invited them to participate in this proclamation reading today. We're going to have Jenna have official words on this.
So, I work in the Environmental Health Department and we, as you know, partner with Waterloo Community Development. We go into homes, we do lead risk assessments, healthy homes inspections. Without this program, a lot of underprivileged, underserved families wouldn't have the means to make the necessary repairs to keep their children safe. Lead poisoning can stunt growth, cause behavioral issues, along with any, a lot of other health problems. So, this is a great program. Another thing to keep in mind is 70% of homes in this community were built before 1978.
Who do you have with you?
Oh, sorry. This is Alex. She is our new Healthy Homes Coordinator for the Environmental Health Program and our Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Specialist. So...
Well, I just want to say, first and foremost, the lead grant that we've received in the past, I think over about the last 10 years, we've been as aggressive as we possibly can in trying to rid homes of lead poisoning. As you mentioned, serious side effects that happen from those, and primarily children, that take lead poisoning. And so, we're just glad that we have advocates. We just continue to pray that the amount of resources come through this community so we can continue all these programs. And I want to thank for the partnership because that makes all the difference. Just community dollars, community development may receive the dollars, but it's the partners that they work with every day to try to bring this information to people's homes and to help change them. So, I want to thank you as advocates and all the advocates mentioned on the proclamation for the incredible work that you're doing. So, thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you. All right, thank you. Now it is time for oral presentation. Presentations, it's your opportunity to address the City Council on non-agenda related items. Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts. We have already two people that read you... So, Rebecca, you are, you are, you have an item on the agenda, the consent? Okay. We'll wait until that comes up. And then, Priscilla Cunningham, are you in the audience? Please step up, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts.
My name is Priscilla Cunningham. Have you seen me at this council meeting for the past two council meetings? The same thing that I was complaining about, but on this thing got worse. But there is a, it's not an option, it's the law that individuals have fair housing. It's the law. And since they evicted me, I've been filling out these sheets to get housing, and I can't get housing. You know what they told me? The last two people, they have vacant units. My eviction is not old enough. Now, what is that? My eviction is not old enough for them to rent to me when I have rented in one residence for 11 years. This is the third meeting that I've been to about this. I see the times cut down to three minutes. Legal aid, free help, legal aid for helping tenants avoid unlawful eviction and possible homelessness. Legal aid dropped my case after I went to the district court. District court didn't give me an oral hearing to find out that I had complied with what Martin wanted me to comply to. With this fair housing, these landlords are out of control. Retaliation, know your rights, retaliation for having filed a charge or complained about discrimination of participating in an investigation on court proceedings. That's not allowed. It's my right not to be retaliated against. What is prohibited? Refuse to negotiate for housing. They refusing to negotiate with me for housing. They denying me a dwelling, making housing unavailable, said different terms and conditions for people. I paid a $25 application fee out at Walnut, at Heritage, and there was another person in our building that didn't pay anything to fill out the application at Heritage. Dan and Tanya, what do you mean my, 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 my eviction is not old enough? What does that matter when it was unlawful and I've been living at the same residence for 11 years paying rent? I had to pay rent to stay there 11 years. Somebody at this council or downtown, somewhere down here, somebody need to help me. And I'm sorry, please excuse me for not thanking you, Mr. Mayor, and the council for listening to me. But somebody need to do something, help me. I can't stay at the shelter forever. I don't want to stay at the shelter forever. I get enough money per month to pay my rent. Somebody need to help me. I'm begging you all again today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address? Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Leon B. Gay. I'm at 204 Baltimore Street, and I speak today in support of Ms. Priscilla Cunningham's case. We've been following this for a while as other people in the community who are concerned about the injustice that was served to her. I mean, there's a lot of issues here. We had a landlord that retaliated against her for going to the city for some issues with her apartment, which is illegal. And Marty Stokes with Marty Realty is one of the, is the landlord that has done this. And in fact, I think what we find here is just there's, beyond the injustice of this, there's a huge issue with the eviction courts and the way that they're proceed. Once they rule, this council can't move forward with anything, you know. It's hard. Like, a lot of these nonprofits put their hands up and everyone, there's a huge gap, you know. So, in a way that a lot of people here are trying to scramble to help keep our elders in safe and affordable housing. Instead, what we have is, you know, an elder who is now in a shelter and has more barriers to getting housing again because, like she said, the eviction is an issue. When we talk about evictions, you know, that, that follows people for a long time. I've talked to several people, other people who have been in the women's shelter who are experiencing the same issue. This, evictions that are beyond, that, that involve landlords retaliating against them, you know, for complaining, for, you know, telling them that it's not right that they live in a house without windows. And bringing up important issues that the city should stand behind them, but instead, a lot of these people are, you know, living in that fear of being evicted, and that follows you. And that's how a lot of these people end up in, you know, very unsafe situations. So, when we talk about the policy that was passed here with the new rental ordinance, you know, that has to come with enforcement. And we've talked and brought up more and more about the need for more rental inspectors in the city, the need to invest in that. We need to know when that date is, that we can come and bring forward that with the new budget proposal, when that, when that date will be. We can provide a lot more resources and ideas for funding that program. A lot of other cities are comparable with us, have these very nuanced rental ordinances that sort of help people learn about what rent abatement is, how to pay your, how to, you know, use that to sort of make sure that you have affordable housing. And this is all in support though of Ms. Priscilla, who I believe strongly in, you know, getting our elders into safe and affordable housing. And with what happened to her, like she says, she has a long history of paying her rent on time, paying, paying her rent, but these evictions are on people's record and landlords will throw it out automatically. So, we've talked to several landlords who've said that we should just bring it up right away in the application process, and we've tried very hard to make sure we strengthen her application. But again, we do need more assistance on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda related items?
Hi, my name is Sarah Hill. And Priscilla is one of, what should I say? One of the clients that came to the Getting Ahead Group. This is a group that bridges poverty. It's called Getting Ahead in the Cedar Valley. I started this class over 11 years ago. I attended it, and now I'm a facilitator there. And I'm an advocate too for things that go on in the community, like this with the landlord. I did have to cross the same barrier she did. And probably I went farther. And when I got farther, it said, well, there's an entity of LLC group that's stopping us from getting what we need to live. All we're asking for is a decent place to live. You know, we pay our rent on time. We have good records for that. This class teaches us to investigate, why are we coming up against all these things? And we do need help from the community to help us, you know. And I've been as far as I can with the landlord, and I won, and I've still received nothing. I don't have a place with a place to live. I have a problem with a place to live right now, but every time we come up against the same people in our community that gives back to this community every day, and we don't get any help. To help us fight these landlords that accept rent and only accept rent, refuse to give you a receipt, you know, for your rent that you've paid, refuse to come out and fix anything up, and then they want to take you to court and say things to you like, "We have enough money. You don't have enough money to fight us." All we're doing is we're asking for some help with this situation because we want to give back to this community. And I work for Bridges of Poverty. So, that helps us learn how to stand up because this is the first time I've ever stood up in front of anybody's face and said anything because I'm tired. I'm tired of my voice not being heard. I'm tired of my people being thrown out. So, we're just asking for some help, and I would appreciate that. And I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hill, we need your address for the record.
437 Cutler Street.
Nice to see you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for all the help you give.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Sorry I'm late. My name is Belinda Creighton Smith. I reside at 416 Oliver Street, Waterloo, Iowa. And I'm here again to speak on behalf of the situation with Mother Cunningham. And I do understand that a lot that because of deadlines and other issues, and maybe even it has the appearance that, you know, the landlord is retaliating and thinks she's retaliating and all of that. But the truth is that she paid her rent on time. The truth is that there was some elements in her home that was detrimental to her health. The facts are that any other person who had, or landlord who had done something like that, probably would have had some consequences to pay. Whatever needs to happen, if it means that the pressure needs to be put on folks who are prosecuting this case or refusing to hear her case, then we need to do whatever we need to do. And we need the help of the city council to get it done so that our voices can be united and it can, they can be heard, especially when it comes to tenant landlord relationships and the way in which those who have the power are taking advantage of the disenfranchised and marginalized. And we are here to unite our voices so that the oppressed and the marginalized will be heard. And so, hear what the people of the community is saying to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Fisher Washington, and I am also familiar with Sister Cunningham's case. And my heart goes out to her for all that she's going through. But my situation is similar to that. I moved here to Iowa last year, July, and I put in for an apartment, a house over on Avon Street. And when I moved in there, I was not welcome there. The neighbors there, they messed up my yard as we cleaned the yard. The next morning, I come back there, the yard is full with leaves and wind did not do that. I complained to official realtors about it, and they did nothing about it. Over and over, over again, they messed up the yard as we tried to clean it up to make it livable for us to live. So, when I told them, as I said, I didn't spend that one night in that place, and within a week's time, I told them I don't feel safe there, that I had to move. And they told me that I would be breaking the lease if I left. I said, "Well, I'm not safe here. I don't feel safe." So, they told me, well, they inspected the place. I recorded them inspecting the place. Everything was just as it was, as my better because we cleaned it and everything. And they told me that I would not get my deposit back unless they rented the place out. Well, they, whether they rented it out or not, I didn't check, but I'm now looking for a place. It's been a year. I've been looking for a place, and every time I fill out an application, I get no calls back. So, one place that I did call back, and they told me that my name stated that I had owed $1,000. And I'm like, "No, no, no." And they said, "Did you rent?" I said, "I didn't rent from nobody except for officials." They said that I know Tony or whoever, and I said, "I rented from them, but I was not welcome there." And then my name has been blackballed. Every place that I tried to put in an application for rent, they refused me because it's listed that I owe thousands of dollars, and I did not spend one night in that house, not one week in that house. And I now, I'm stuck at my daughter's house. Not saying that I'm not welcome there. I'm happy there, whatever, but I've been there for a year. My furniture has been restored for over a year. I want a home. I want to live. And I want some place to rent, but my name has been blackballed. Nobody wants to rent nothing to me. So, I'm here speaking and hopefully I could get some help.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda related items? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Greider wanted me to, as he's not able to be here this evening, let folks know that he is canceling his forum for tomorrow evening. And I would also like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing closed.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir.
I would like to pull item six off of the consent agenda.
Yeah, I think he was going to do it.
Okay. It's okay. All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including 1A1 bill's payment for October 10th, 2022, in the amount of $3,038,850.72. And for October 17th, in the amount of $2,960,822.67. And in addition, I'd like to pull off 1A6, please.
Second. All right, so...
Was it, yeah, 1A6.
All right, so that motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the installation of two 25 miles per hour speed humps in the 300 block and 700 block of Bishop Avenue.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Is that the, is it, yes, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Let us know your comments.
My name is Rebecca Shock, and I live at 821 Bishop Avenue in the Maywood Edition. Maywood Edition is a great area in Waterloo. My husband, who passed away last year, and I have lived there for 43 years. Bishop Avenue is a quarter mile long. We have no curbs, no gutters, no sidewalks. It is an emergency snow route. There are many walkers and bikers on Bishop Avenue, and for our safety with all the speeding traffic, you need to walk facing the traffic or walking on the side of the road, which is a very narrow area. It is a shortcut for many drivers from Independence Avenue to Dubuque Road, from Deer, Tyson, the other way. It's a lot of traffic on that road. Speeding on Bishop Avenue has been excessive, so after getting a petition form and getting 37 signatures from homeowners on Bishop Avenue to request some help, I submitted it to the City of Waterloo Public Works Division. I later met with Muhammad Alahi, who listened to our concerns. I spent an hour and a half with him. He was great. He listened to everything I had to say, on behalf of the people in Bishop Avenue. One of the people who signed my petition said she got in her car, followed a city bus, and she clocked it the speed at 47 miles an hour. Bishop is a posted 25 mile an hour avenue. After a speed study was done, I received a letter from Sandy Greco, who said it was recommended for the two speed humps at the 300 and 700 blocks of Bishop Avenue, and I've later learned that they've also put in for a speed hump at the 500 block of Milwaukee, which runs parallel to Bishop. And that they want to raise... And that they want to raise the speed limit from 25 to 30 miles an hour beginning at the 1,200 block of Bishop Avenue. I come now before you to ask for an additional speed hump between the 1,200 and 1,300 block of Bishop Avenue when drivers turn off Independence Avenue heading south on Bishop. Speed, there's no cross streets until you get to Cottage Grove and Bishop Avenue. And that's the corner I live on, 821, 821 Bishop. And so when they're coming from Dubuque Road on Bishop Avenue headed toward Independence, there's crossroads up until that Bishop Avenue, Cottage Grove area, and after that, there are no crossroads. And you'd have to be there to see the speeding. I have a friend who lives across the street who runs daycare. And she starts her daycare between 4:30 and 5:00 in the morning. And she goes, speeding is excessive because it's dark and they don't think anybody's out there watching them. I know. I've been there. I've been out working in my garden and these people during the day just act like we're the freeway, whatever. So while adding speed humps to the 300 and 700 block of Bishop Avenue is greatly appreciated, we're asking for an additional speed hump in between the 1,200 and 1,300 block of Bishop Avenue. And we thank you for your help.
So have you talked to Sandy and Mohammed or anybody in Public Works about the addition?
I, yes, I texted Sandy and she said they would try to address that next spring. But if you're out there with the asphalt people making speed humps now, add another one. Give us some help.
They got to go through, they have to go through a process, tracking and all that stuff.
They did. They did a speed study.
They did it on the 1,200 block as well?
That's why they want to raise the speed from 25 to 30. People are going in excess of 30 right now. So that's not really going to be any.
So right now, we have the number six on there and it's for the two speed humps. So we'll deal with that. And then Randy is over there and he'll have some communication with Sandy about the other requests. So I'm pretty sure you want this to go forward instead of waiting, right?
Please. It's just that you'll have all your equipment out there anyway. Doing those other two, if you can just give us another one to help control the speed.
I get it.
We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Questions, counsel? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Was that it? All right, we have a few appointments. First, we have three appointments to the Board of Adjustments. John Beckman, Jerry Thornsberry, and Craig Holdeman. Are any of you in the audience today? All right, we want to thank them for their service for the Board of Adjustments. We also have two appointments. Number four is a recommendation for appointment of Pam Mass from the Civil Service List for the Intake Project Specialist. Are you here, Pam? All right, and our second is a recommendation of appointment of Stephanie Shavers to the position of Neighborhood Services Coordinator, so. Thank you, Mrs. Washington. All right, we have an appointment. Glad you can join us. Ms. Shavers, as a neighbor, you can't sneak in here like we didn't see you just yet. Would you please stand up? We have Mrs. Stephanie Shavers, who is our new Neighborhood Services Coordinator. Very big position for this city. And we want to thank you so much for joining our team and we look forward to a long and prosperous relationship. So thank you. All right, thank you. We have number two. Could someone take the sidewalk repair assessment?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 sidewalk repair program, sidewalk repair assessment program zone two, contract number 1064.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council on the sidewalk repair assessment program going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, formal contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Like to make a motion to receive, file and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk.
Our engineer's estimate was $558,408.29. Our first bidder was Brock Even Construction LLC of Jessup, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $593,016.58. Our second and final bidder was Midwest Concrete Incorporated of Piazza, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $576,893.30.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award a bid to Midwest Concrete of Piazza, Iowa in the amount of $576,893.30, approving the contract bond and then certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023 sidewalk repair assessment program, contract number 1064, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Number three, please. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and as for the purchase of one 2022 or newer track skid loader.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to a track loader, track skid loader going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming specification bid documents, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk.
Our first bidder was Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid amount was $83,879. Our second bidder was also Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid amount was $91,647. Our third bidder was Blackhawk Equipment of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid amount was $82,444.28. And our final bidder was Altifer Cat of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. And their bid amount was $114,441.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution awarding bid to Blackhawk Equipment of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $82,444.28 in conjunction with the purchase of one 2022 or newer track skid loader.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take four, five, and six, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming experience Waterloo. Board recommendation of awarding Hotel Motel grant funds to the following Iowa Steam in the amount of $3,000 and 50/50 bowling tournament in the amount of $3,000. Number five, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount not to exceed $249,500 in conjunction with the Waterloo Sanitary Sewer Improvements, Cattle Congress Lift Station in Force Main, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number six, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Modus of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $24,000 in conjunction with the Waterloo Center for the Arts Youth Pavilion, Phase Two Boiler Replacement Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second. All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions about four, five, and six? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Thank you. Seven, eight, and nine.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving supplemental agreement number two to a professional service agreement with Stanley Consultants, Inc. of Des Moines, Iowa, originally executed March 11th, 2019 in the amount not to exceed $58,944 in conjunction with the Delane Avenue Stormwater Detention Improvement Projects and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number eight is adopting a resolution approving a request by the City of Waterloo to dedicate a natural gas easement over a portion of Lot 14 and Track K Midport America Park Plant, Plant Number Two in the southeast quarter and southwest quarter, Section Five Township 89 North, Range 13 West, and of the 5th PM. Okay. Number nine is adopting a resolution approving a request by the City of Waterloo to dedicate a public utility easement over a portion of the southwest quarter, southwest one quarter of the northwest functional quarter, FRL Northwest, one quarter of Township Five, Township 89 North, Range 13 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian. Fifth Principal Meridian.
All right, second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Anyone have any comments on seven, eight, nine? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the council. Counsel, any questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Ten, eleven, and twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with TerraCon Consultants, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed $2,725 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2020 Courtland, Jefferson, and Mulberry Streets Reconstruction Program, Contract 1015, and authorizing the mayor to execute. Said document 11 is a resolution approving a development agreement with KL Properties LLC for the construction of 2,400 square foot office building in minimum assessment agreement in the amount of $220,000 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And finally, to adopt a resolution approving an encroachment agreement with Gregory Schreiber to allow for an 18-foot by 24-foot garage to extend four feet onto an easement located at 928 Loretta Avenue in the R2-1 and 2 family resident district and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. All right, thank you. Thank you. Any comments on, anyone like to address the council on these items? Counsel?
Quick question, sir. I had emailed Noel this question and he did get back to me and I still didn't quite understand. So in the original agreement with Mr. Youngblood, depending on this development agreement, whether they got tax rebates or not, that he was going to either get 100% of the tax rebates or if the tax rebates were like 50% for them, he was going to get 50%. So when I emailed Mr. Anderson, he said that, and I understand the process, we're giving him X amount of dollars per year for the infrastructure and we're adding $50,000 a year. But my question is, when that money is paid back, does that money then go back into the TIF? Or does he continue since there's not a expiration date on when he's going to get the taxes from this property?
All right, Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So he will only get enough funds from this particular project to pay for the land acquisition as part of those additional payments.
So the five-year period or six years that we're going to be paying in $50,000 a year to get that $300,000 payment, after that, then that money goes back into the TIF?
It just goes into the regular TIF, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a request by Five B's LLC, Johnny B Construction, for an appeal to the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on the city-owned right-of-way of West 16th Street located across West 16th Street from 1728 Blackhawk Street to allow an approximate 20-foot by 120-foot paved area between the street and the property line. Number 14, a resolution amending the original resolution approved on August 17th, 2020, said resolution approving and authorizing a loan dis- and disbursement agreement with the Iowa Finance Authority and authorizing and providing for the issuance of taxable sewer revenue capital loan note, Series 2020B, in order to provide for the funding of a sponsored project under the terms of a new note to be issued in the principal amount of $4,861,743.40. Resolution, and number 15, a resolution authorizing an exception to the City of Waterloo's purchasing policy to approve the purchase of one 2021 demo curb roller, CM 4000, with profile two standard drum in the amount of $8,501. 2019 used curb roller, HP 1300 hydropack generator in the amount of $4,395 from Star Equipment LTD of Waterloo, Iowa.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Anyone have any comments on thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention on item number 15 that it's really good to see the amount of work, the change in the work structure that the Public Works is doing, taking on more of these concrete jobs. And we're not putting them out for bid. We're doing a lot of this stuff in-house and they're doing a really great job. And I appreciate the fact that we can do this type of work now.
Kudos director, division manager. All right, thank you, Mr. Bozen. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 16, 17, 18, and 19?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for design services for pavement rehabilitation to runway 1230, taxiway Alpha East and taxiway Echo at the Waterloo Regional Airport in amount not to exceed $106,600 via future FFA grant. Number FAA-AIP-3-19-0094-053, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Seventeen is resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECom Technical Services for design services for pavement reconstruction to taxiway Alpha West at Waterloo Regional Airport in an amount not to exceed $227,400 via future FFA grant. Number FFA-BIL-AIP-3-19-0094-056-2023, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Eighteen is resolution approving a professional services agreement not to exceed $14,000 with HR Green to submit an FY 2023 EPA Brownfields Cleanup Grant to cover costs associated with abating asbestos containing material in former wrath packing building, buildings located at 1442 1508 1620, 1656 Sycamore Streets, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. And finally, resolution approving a project memorandum of agreement with the Waterloo Development Corporation for the continuing partnership for projects in downtown Waterloo, including the Whitewater Course, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Items 16, 17, 18, and 19. Does anyone have any questions for us? Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I had a question on 18. I'm, I'm just curious because I didn't, I was under the understanding there's not asbestos in those buildings.
All right, Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, so we did have a direct EPA assistance grant targeted Brownfield area. It's called TBA, where they did go in and do lead paint detection, PCBs in the ground, as well as asbestos throughout the buildings, all under a grant, so that's why you didn't see anything come directly to council for those approvals. We did find asbestos in the buildings, so we are going for a grant for asbestos removal as well. We think we have a good chance of getting it, but they did find asbestos in the buildings.
The reason I brought that up is because when this development agreement came up, and I, and I posed a $2.9 million purchase price, and then the, I said we're gonna have $5 million into this project by, with the, with the demolition and the asbestos removal. You told us that Crystal Eyes had done a study, and there was no asbestos in that building.
That is correct. Tom Pope believed that they had replaced a lot of the pipe wraps, so it did not have asbestos in there, but there was asbestos found in other materials, and I do have a full report on it.
Okay. Could, could you forward that to me?
Yes, again.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number 20, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the City of Waterloo traffic code by adding subsection 4A Bishop Avenue to Section 541, increasing speed limits in certain areas Bishop Avenue from the 1200 block to Independence Avenue, 30 mile per hour Independence Avenue to Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, 30 mile, 35 miles per hour, and adding subsection 52A Northeast Drive from Martin Luther King Drive to Newell Street, 35 miles per hour.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions about this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Or, excuse me, Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you. All right, 21, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo traffic code, Section 549 loading zones or grabbing-go zones. A motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time, amending City of Waterloo traffic code, delaying, deleting subsection 3 Commercial Street and subsection, and section 549 loading zones are grabbing-go zones. And it's in entirety and inserting in lieu of a new subsection 3 Commercial Street of Section 549 loading zones are grabbing-go zones for the southwest side of the 500 block Convention Center.
Second.
It just keeps going.
It's, it's, it's a never-ending ordinance.
Questions about this item? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second. Motion been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 22, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider for the first time in ordinance amending the City of Waterloo traffic code by adding a new section 550 designated Memorial Hall parking between signs and adding subsection 1 Corbett Court, the south side, southwest side, to the traffic code.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Questions on these items? I mean, this item. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?